I'd like to call the meeting of the Amherst Executive Village Organization to order. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands united nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would just like to take a minute for a point of clarification regarding the masks. Last month, prior to the July meeting, we talked to Lorraine County Health Commissioner, who's been guiding the Lorraine County schools through the pandemic. And he said, as long as we all wore masks into the room and maintained this safe distances, we could take the masks down. We called him again this week for clarification for the meeting, and he gave the same guidelines, as long as we keep our distance. The other part about that that I think is really important, if I'm wearing a mask, I think it's hard for the recording to pick us up. So, we truly respect the importance of the mask, and we want to do what's right, and we're not expecting others to do things that we're not, all of those items. But, because I just want to make sure that everybody can understand, I'm going to have my mask down tonight. And those at the head table, we are at a safe distance. If anybody wants your mask down, you can take it down. Anybody that wants it up, if you want, when you speak, to take down, it'll be fine. If I miss you because you're behind the mask, just give me a wave, and we'll catch everybody, okay? And I also want to take another minute to thank, again, the administration, staff, everybody who has been working so, so hard on the restart plan in trying to get a safe environment for our staff and kids, so that we can get back to school, and to give families the option, if they don't feel safe, to be able to do things online. So, again, thank you to the entire staff. Okay, so we'll start with your call, Mrs. Giuffredo.
Mrs. Nyaduk.
Here.
Mrs. Gillis.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Yakubozzi.
Here.
And Mr. Zappa.
Here.
I'll take a recommendation to adopt the agenda as presented, including any addendums.
So moved.
Second.
Yakubozzi, moved. Engel, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Yakubozzi.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder.
Aye.
Did anybody sign up for the hearing in public?
No, we did not.
Okay, so we'll move on with the agenda then. Board recommendations, is that going to be you, Mr. Sayers?
Yes, and I think Amy maybe can speak to item B. Item A is self-explanatory, and item B would you...
I can speak to that one as well.
Yeah, well, the item B is kind of a unique one, in terms of it didn't really fit into any of our other areas, as far as personnel, educational service, or business service recommendations, a very, kind of, unique resolution. So that's why we kind of submitted it as a board resolution. But Amy, I know you had some conversation with John Britton, our legal counsel, about that, would you be willing to share some things?
Yes. There has been a large settlement set aside with Purdue Pharma, which is the manufacturer and trademark holder of OxyContin. This lawsuit was all about spreading that settlement over those who could prove that they've been injured essentially by the Purdue Pharma OxyContin product. We don't have to provide any firm documentation. There's a pot of money, it says that there's a substantial pot of money sitting there for Amherst Schools, as well as many, many, many other entities. And Mr. Britton, and Miss Britton, is the partner essentially in this filing of the attorney, the law firm in the state of New York that's handling the main filing of this claim. So, again, there is some fun sitting there for those entities injured by the OxyContin product, and this was just a resolution for the board to acknowledge that we could move forward with the proof of claim. It's really not...
It's there for the asking, right?
Pardon? It's there for the asking, so we might as well move forward with it.
Anybody have any other questions? So, unless Amy or Steve had anything else to say, I would take a motion for the board recommendation six A and B.
So moved.
Second.
Did you get that, Mr. Giuffredo? Okay. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozzi.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder.
Aye.
And I'll move on to the treasuries report, Mrs. Giuffredo.
This evening, I'll just be very brave, I promise. The five-year forecast revenue and expenditure summary that I provide periodically throughout the year just shows that we have a lesser cash balance by about half a million dollars this July as compared to July of 2019. And that can entirely be explained by the advances for real estate taxes from Lorraine County were greater, that much greater, last July than they were this July. Settlement actually should occur tomorrow on real estate taxes. So likewise, August is going to be greater in real estate taxes and public utility tangible than it was last year. So, there's only one month of activity. In fact, this is the only month of the year that our month-to-date year-to-date match, just as a little tidbit. All right, I'll move on to my items. Pretty standard stuff here. Items A and B are approving minutes, and July 2020 financials. Item C is a little bit odd. It's just a very small transfer from the quote 777 fund to the general fund. It is the payroll clearing account, and every once in a while we have some payroll corrections. We have a small balance that doesn't clear itself out, and we can transfer it to the general fund as of this lady's revenue. Item D are then announced as prescribed by a higher vice code. Item E is just a change to temporary appropriations for the bond recovery fund. This was so we could encumber all of our debt service payments, principal and interest for fiscal '21. Item F is donations and that is it.
Take a motion for treasuries recommendations A to A through F? Yakubozzi, Zappa. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Yakubozzi.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
And Mrs. Snyder.
Aye.
I'll move on to the superintendent's report, but before we do, I would like to, I should have said this in the beginning, welcome Mrs. Walker to the big kid table.
Thank you very much, Snyder.
Yes, you're welcome. She'll be joining us from here on our way. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Giuffredo.
Yes, thank you very much. And before we can start, we have kind of a special introduction this evening, and kind of old news, because the board actually took action last month, but still very exciting news. And I wanted to take this opportunity to kind of make a special introduction here. And Mr. Teller was unable to be here this evening, but Mrs. Sayers, one of our assistant principals, is here filling in for him, and just I'm going to turn it over to Ashley.
Thank you. Mr. Teller asked me, happy to be here tonight to, as you know, introduce Mr. Tony. We are very excited to have him on the Steel staff. Nick grew up in Elyria, taught at Maple Heights in Elyria, and in the last two years, he was actually in our district at NORD, so part of the Amherst family already. And we kind of think it is a welcome home back to Steel, because Nick's first year before he got his official teaching job, he was here at Steel in a long-term position, and also working in the library. And when Mr. Teller sent out to the staff, you know, that we were recommending for you to hire Nick, so many staff members reached out to Joe, we talked to myself, about how thrilled they were, and about how they remember the bulletin board he put up in the library about their pictures, you know, and just things that he did. In his short time at Steel, you know, five years ago, he made that much of an impact on our staff and on our students. And so we're thrilled to have him already. He's jumped right in like a seasoned pro in just his one week here. We're happy to have him, and just know that we made a good choice, because he's, in just a short time, has already made such a big impact. So, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Ashley, too. I'm so excited, and as Ashley said, I started out here, so it's so great to be back. And we have this saying that it takes a village, and my mom's here, and my fiancee Olivia is here tonight, but I've learned so much from all the teachers I've had as a student, but being in here, working here at Amherst as well, too, and just ready to give it all back. So, thank you, and I feel very fortunate, very honored to be here, so thank you very much.
Quite a year to step into an administrative role. I have to say that, actually, just this morning, we had, probably, what was it, Mr. Molar? Mrs. Walker was there. We had probably a five-hour meeting with some of our staff this morning, because we're trying to work through some staffing, the e-campus, who's teaching what, how impacts the master schedule this morning. And I know Ashley couldn't be there, she had another commitment, so Nick was at that meeting this morning, and just did a phenomenal job as we try to put together the pieces of this puzzle, and making sure that kids are getting what they need, whether it be through the e-campus option or through the on-campus option. So, right away, I mean, a week into it, and he's played a key role in what we're trying to do here. So Nick, again, thank you so much, and congratulations, and very well deserved. Great job. All right, and the next item I had on my report, just wanted to kind of give maybe a big picture update on the restart plan, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Molar, and he's going to kind of go through some of the details of that plan, and some of the details that we're going to be working through over the next two to two and a half weeks. But as the board is aware, we did release and make public our restart plan, actually about two weeks ago. And all of those documents are on the website, it's very comprehensive. Mr. Molar did a great job with it, and there's many, many documents on that website covering a wide range of topics, and specifics about our e-campus program, our on-campus programs, some building-specific information. So that has all been released and made available. And I want to say that one of the key themes, I guess, for us as we were developing these plans, dating back to our survey in very late June, is that we knew that the overwhelming majority of our parents wanted their children to return to school for that structure, that routine, and all the things that go into in-person learning. But we also knew from that survey that we had approximately one-fourth of our parents expressed concern, and were not really comfortable in sending their children back to school, and would be interested in the e-campus option. So, providing that choice to parents was very, very important to us, is we wanted to make sure that we provided two high-quality options, and give parents an opportunity to choose what they think is best for their child. Each plan, on-campus, e-campus, has its advantages, disadvantages, and there is no perfect plan. As much as we would like to develop a perfect plan, unfortunately, we're not able to do that. I think we've come up with two high-quality plans, but I wanted to emphasize that choice, giving parents a choice in what they think is best for their children, is something that's very, very important to us. And we very much respect and understand whatever a parent decides in terms of what is best for their children. So I wanted to highlight that. And the ironic thing about this is when our actual numbers came in about a week later, from what we had in the survey, we were almost right on. Our actual numbers ended up, we're right today, I think yes, of today, I want to say like 23.2% of our families or students have opted for the e-campus option, and 23% is what the number was in late June. So that survey ended up being a very strong predictor of what actually transpired. So now that we have those numbers, we are moving forward with the details of who's teaching what, and working through some of those things, and I know Mr. Molar's going to talk about that. But the other thing I did want to mention is that our meetings with the health commissioner are, again, ongoing. And we had our most recent meeting with the Lorraine County Health Commissioner, Lorraine County Superintendent, on Friday morning, and he indicated, and it's his thought at this time, is that, you know, we should continue to move forward with the implementation of our plans that each school district in the county has developed and put together to stay the course. And as of right now, he has no intention of recommending that Lorraine County go to an all-remote kind of situation like you're seeing in some other counties. That is not the case here in Lorraine County. He is not, at this point in time anyway, ready to make that recommendation. Obviously, we never know what the future may bring, or what may transpire, and no one has a crystal ball in terms of how this thing is going to unfold. But he did reiterate last week that, again, for each district, to move forward with implementing the plans that they adopted, and he has seen our plan and approved of our plan. So those meetings are ongoing, and I want to say it again, I know I said it before, but we are so blessed with the Lorraine County Public Health Department. I mean, their nursing support, question and answer, as relates to athletic guidance requirements. We've had, you know, teams that have been involved in workouts, I mean, they respond right away. Health Commissioner joining the county superintendents on a regular basis, it is so much appreciated. Because we, I've said it over and over, we are educators. We're not public health experts. So we are going to defer, it makes sense for us to defer to the Lorraine County Health Commissioner for guidance on those public health issues. And that has been our approach, and will continue to be our approach as we move forward. So, as I mentioned, we're in the process of working through the details, and I want to commend our staff. Everybody is just working very hard, very collaboratively, going above and beyond, the creativity, the things that we're seeing, the things that we're hearing, and teachers are planning and working on. It's just, again, it's an example of during a time of adversity, how our folks step up to the plate. And, you know, I just, I believe in our students, I believe in our staff, and I believe in our community, and we're going to get this thing figured out in a way that's going to make this year a positive and productive experience for our students. I believe it from the bottom of my heart, whether they choose the on-campus option or whether they choose the e-campus option. So it's very important that we promote, you know, that kind of feeling of hope and optimism as we move forward. I think kids more than ever need us to be their robots that way, in being positive and promoting that hope and optimism. There's enough gloom and doom out there, we just, in my opinion, we don't need any more of that. We need more positivity, hope, and optimism. And that's what I think we stand for as a school district, and that's what we're going to continue to promote. So at this point, if it's okay, I'd like to turn it over to Mike, and he's going to kind of go through some of the details that we've been working through and will be working through over these next two and a half weeks.
All right, thanks, Pete. Just wanted to give the board an update of kind of where we're at and where we're heading. I'm not going to go over the plans that were released, and those have been out for a while, and I've just been playing with those plans. So we're going to, I'm going to focus on where we are in the next couple of weeks as we enter the first day of school, just to give you an update, and also, of course, share that with the community. Afterwards tonight, some of those items will go on the district calendar, so parents can have those, because they can finalize, as you can imagine. Everything's a moving target, and everything's a lot of work in making those decisions. So if you see a spelling mistake or an error in here, I apologize, it was being tweaked up right before the meeting started, of course. So here's where we're at. This first one kind of focuses, I guess, on staff and teachers. Today and tomorrow, we are finalizing the e-campus and on-campus staffing. As of right now, we've notified Powers and NORD of who has been selected for the e-campus staff teachers. Steel will be this evening, and then AGH will probably be some point tomorrow. So we're finalizing that, again, we did today five hours, and tomorrow we'll finalize the staffing for those two programs. Tomorrow, we're going to release with transportation request form, that'll be open for a week until probably Monday, August 7th, midnight. We need to know for the on-campus students who is going to be using our transportation. Obviously, in Amherst, we have a lot of students who ride a bike, walk, or get dropped off in the morning. This year, we'll probably have a lot more being transported by their parents versus our transportation. So we need to get a better number, so we can admit efficient and effective bus routes. I work with our new transportation supervisor, T.O. Ford, on this, and it's ready to be released tomorrow. So we're going to send that out to the community for parents to, again, let us know we're on-campus students if you're going to be using our transportation, so we can make efficient and effective bus routes. Thursday, August 13, after we finalize the e-campus and on-campus staffing, I'm hosting an e-campus staff meeting with all of the e-campus teachers in all the buildings. We're going to review the e-campus framework, make sure we're all on the same page as the district, and then finalize, probably break up into the building groups to finalize those e-campus schedules and how it's going to work for each building, now that we know the teachers, the numbers, and everything. We posted, I think, in the plan, some tentative draft schedules, and those were just drafts. We let everyone know that that's going to need to be changed. It's going to be a big difference if we had, you know, 40 kids on e-campus or 200 in grade levels. So now that we know, we're going to tweak those on the 13th. Then Friday is a new teacher orientation, where we have every year a new teacher coming in the district, and we're orienting them to our district and getting them ready for this unique new school year. The following week, when staff reports on August 17, those first two days, 17th and 18th, are going to be for staff and teacher building and district meetings. There's some trains we're going to do district-wide, building-wide. They obviously have their own buildings to go over the procedures and operations of the building and its new environment, so that's going to be the focus for the 17th and 18th. On the 19th and 20th, we're carving out two days of specific professional development for our e-campus staff. Many of our technology team are hosting that for them. While we're focusing on the e-campus staff for professional development, the on-campus staff will continue to, again, work in their buildings and with the principals, administrations, and, again, refine those on-campus schedules and courses and classes, et cetera. Then we're going to revert on Friday the 21st and Monday the 24th to on-campus staff professional development. We realize that there's a possibility that at some point, we're going to go to all online. And so after we train the e-campus staff on best practices, study through virtual classroom, we want to provide our on-campus teachers with the same opportunity, just in case they want to start preparing now for that possibility that they might go to all. You know, we all go to e-campus in the near future, in a couple weeks, couple months, or whenever. So we wanted to devote some time for our on-campus staff to come back and do some tech training and virtual classroom training as well. And then 25th and 26th, the two days before school starts, really is going to be wide open for the buildings and departments and grade levels to collaborate together, to continue to refine things, improve things, have the e-campus and on-campus staff now coordinate together, because even though they're kind of doing two separate kind of programs, when they're e-campus or on-campus, for example, third grade, we stop to work as a team. So we're devoting those two days before school starts for that collaboration as well. And of course, the first day of school is on Thursday the 27th. So that's where we're headed with scars bars with staffing. Any questions about that for the board? All right. So now, the next side is just kind of more on the parent's side of what's coming up. And these are, again, some things I'm going to add to the district calendar to put out to the community and the parents who are kind of aware. On August 19th, we're going to post the e-campus and on-campus class list. At 3:30, we always kind of try to do that a week ahead of time, which is in the same timeframe as we have in other years. We're not having in-person open houses, of course, but we're going to do a virtual open house for each building. So on the 21st, I think it's Friday, all of our administrators and staff of the building are going to kind of put out a virtual open house. Our goal is to have them hopefully walk through a video, discuss maybe some of the reasons and rationale for some of these decisions we're making, also allow them to hopefully see some of the building, and see some of the different things we have up signage, how things will work in hallways. I know, for example, Steel has actual specific pathway for walking in the building. So we want the parents to have a virtual open house on the 21st. Kindergarten screenings are happening on the 28th, 21st, and 24th. More information will come out from Powers Elementary School and the new principal, Ryan Teckner. And then on the 24th and 25th, oh, I'm sorry, 20th and 21st, also, we're going to have Chromebook distribution and parent pickup. One of the recommendations from our staff was not only distribute Chromebooks to our e-campus learners who aren't going to be on the site, but also to see if we can distribute those to on-campus students who are going to be here, so that we don't spend maybe the first day or two or three days trying to distribute Chromebooks, get them online, logged in. The students, of course, are very familiar with how to transition to the Chromebooks and the virtual world, so we're thinking, we want to get those Chromebooks out to e-campus and on-campus before school starts, to let them prepare. And so NORD, AGH, are going to be 20th and 21st, and then 24th and 25th, our Powers and Steel. And more information, again, will go out about specific times in the day, morning, afternoon, maybe evening hours, to come by and pick up those Chromebooks for parents and for the students. And then finally, the first day of school is the 27th. I want to give one reminder that we have asked for health reasons that all students, whether e-campus or on-campus, have completed the emergency student information update, the return to registration form, that has to be completed to come to school. So we need that information. We released that, opened it up, I think, a week ago or so. I checked, today we have over 500 people who've already filled it out. It's relatively pretty easy, especially if you did it last year, it's almost just a refreshing of, yes, 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 all the information's the same, unless there's an update. So that's good news, we've had, you know, 500 already fill out those forms for the students' emergency information. So, and we will have probably stations at Chromebook pickup for a parent who has maybe not done the form yet. You want the Chromebook, that's fine, please sit down and fill out the form online, and you can take your Chromebook with you. But we need to have that emergency information obviously filled out for each student, of course, for all students. That's kind of where we're at for some parent information. And again, I'll post that all on the website and our district calendar, so we have some of those details on there. And we'll add more, again, things change every day. So we will continue to add more information, more updates, and more procedures as we get closer. We just want to stagger it, so we're not overloading parents, we're going to transportation tomorrow, and then we'll continue on after that. Any questions?
I do.
Yes.
So will the board get a list of who's doing the e-campus teaching for parents? Can we get a list, just in case someone...
Sure, sure, yeah, that's going to be public, right?
Right. And then the other thing, I just wanted to make a comment, Myers asked me for all the class supply lists, so Janet gave me all those, so Myers does have all the lists that the kids will need, you know, the supplies?
And we don't have a specific e-campus supplies, because that's a question that's come up a couple times, what we've been telling parents, and if we need to, we'll get that out. We've been telling parents, I mean, you have craft and school supplies, pencils, pens, markers, crayons, scissors, paper, just have those supplies ready. We're going to let our e-campus staff know that if you are coming to a project, let's say, you know, next week, just let your parents know probably ahead of time that they're going to maybe need some additional supplies in the store or something. But we don't want, again, to have parents go and get a whole bunch of supplies that may not be used, depending on what class they have. So, good question about the supplies, thank you.
I want to follow up to the question about the e-campus teachers. That was, in fact, that was one of the things we were, well, most of what we were working on this morning. And again, I want to, I mean, this is, I mean, it's really like a giant jigsaw puzzle, and it's not as simple as, well, this person's online all day, this person's in-person all day. I mean, we have teachers that will be teaching 100% online through e-campus. We have other teachers that will be teaching half and half. We have other teachers that may be teaching in-person, what, 80% of the day, 90% of the day, and maybe one course will be taught online. So our staff and our administrators, our building administrators that are working in the building, have done a great job of working the staffing around the needs of the students in the courses and the programs that they've signed up for. So it is really, and obviously, once that process is completed, in fact, we can include that on our September board agenda, you'll see that, and it's really, it's really quite the puzzle, I guess, that we've been trying to put together here. And again, it's just, it's been kind of neat to see the way it's come together, and everybody says, sure, if you need me to do this class, I'll do that class, and it just, it's been great. So again, thank you, Mike, we appreciate that. We appreciate that.
So do we have an idea of how many students at what grade, just in general? Are we seeing more people at the younger grades, 20B, or more people at junior high level, or is it evenly distributed through all grades?
Yeah. Excellent question. Besides the ninth grade, which I think is around 30, which is the smallest group in the district, probably because they're incoming freshmen and parents probably want them to become this deal to make sure they start off their career really well. Besides ninth grade around 30, every other grade in the district is between, I think, 51 and 77, give or take, right there. So really, so it's almost a nice 2020, whatever percentage across the board, every grade level, which really did help. We didn't have any kind of outlined grade levels with huge vast numbers, except, again, the low freshmen, they were all, again, between that nice 50 to 77 number, which in each grade level, we have between, let's say, 225 and possibly maybe classic 300 still. I mean, that's, again, it was a good number. It's very helpful for that to work out that way. Sometimes numbers work, sometimes they don't, but that's how it worked out. Any other questions?
Do you have any additional reports that you'd like to give, or was that your report from the night?
That's my report.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Now we'll hear from, um, Ms. Walker.
Not only am I at the table, I'm also on the agenda.
That's right.
So exciting, big day. Wanted to follow up. Last, during the July meeting, I had shared with you about how we have the upcoming mobile food pantry on July 30th, and that was done in partnership with Second Harvest, Lorain County Education Service Center, Amherst Police Department and the National Guard. And Second Harvest, putting everything together, had projected that we would have about 250 families come to the line, and they actually had to go with another truck because we had 334 families that were fed that evening. And the real critical piece of that is 291 of them were new and had never been through any of the Second Harvest events before. So by bringing that here to our community, we were able to impact even more people than they had in the past at events like this. And they were very excited about, you know, talking, very excited about the outcome as well as, you know, seeing if we would be interested in future events. They loved the layout, coming in on Mylan, going through the junior high, and then coming out from Powers. And it just, it was funny afterwards because Jill Mayork, our social worker, was texting me that evening and she said, you know, I'm going to want to do this again, right? And I said, I'm kind of counting on it. So, you know, just an example of reaching out into the community, but then being able to see, you know, the benefits of that was really great. So that's my hat.
That's your report?
That's my report.
Okay. Any other questions for Sarah?
I just want to ask a couple. I know there's been a lot of discussion about special needs students. How are we addressing that so that it is appeasing the parents to get what they need?
I will tell you, I have had very, a lot of very positive conversations with families since we released our plan. And one of the big questions they had is just, how are you going to make this work? And really, it's, we can't make the decision for each family whether they need it on-campus or E-Campus, and they picked based on various factors that impacted their family. But we have intervention specialists, we have therapists that will be working with students both on-E-Campus virtually and on-campus onsite. So while services may look a little different in the virtual world because they can't look exactly like they do in the classroom, we're going to be meeting with families and we're going to find out what's going to work best for them, and we're going to make that work.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to Ms. Train.
The JBS is, their plan is available. I did make it all copy. Your restart plan is available. For those of you who don't know, the majority of the academic stuff will be done online, but the in-person labs will be happening. So they're still working out what days, who's going to be in lab or not in lab to social businesses and do the things that they need to do. But the thing that they have found was helpful is they have done, to, going to do their third Facebook communication with parents from questions and answers. They did one last Wednesday, I believe, was the last. And that's been a big help in them getting weekly or bi-weekly or monthly information because there's a lot of questions about the lab stuff from that perspective. So I think that's been very, very helpful. There's some concerns about, you know, lab going to be happening every day, so how many hours, will it happen, six hours or seven hours a day when they go back? So some of those things, I think, is being a challenge as they prepare to go. However, they have a little different time, they don't go back until after Labor Day. So they're working on that. So that's been the focus, continue to be the focus of the JBS, to have that a positive experience for all those people. Busing was another concern. I know that they've been talking to some homeschools about busing because the buses run, are they going to run? Are they going to run every day? Are they going to have to run every day depending on, again, who's in what program from a lab perspective, from what schools. So, and since there's so many ninth graders that attend, that's a concern as well because they really don't have lab, but they want them in the building. So they're, as they experience some lab things, that's a challenge for them. Otherwise, it's been a positive thing, again, with the staff out there, and we'll see what happens.
Any other questions for Rex? So we'll move on to personnel recommendations. Ms. Sayers?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Nyer. I know the board's had an opportunity to review the agenda items there, and most of these items are items that you're used to seeing this time of year as we prepare for the opening of the school year. I did want to highlight item H there. This is a kind of deep recommendation, Amanda, this year, some extra time. As you're aware, she's our, one of our tech integration specialists, and she, along with Mr. Schwartz and Doug Cogell and his team in the tech department, obviously, are very, very, very busy this time of year trying to get things going and preparing professional development for our staff. And so I did want to call attention to that because that is a little bit out of the ordinary. The other items, I wanted to highlight items A, I and J. We are going to be moving forward with our before and after-school programs. As you recall, Mr. Schwartz did this and carried this responsibility and did a great job with it, supervising the program during her time. And Mr. Teckner has just picked up right where she's left off and just has done a great job with this. It's going to look a little different, obviously, with guidelines and that type of thing, but again, we think this is a very, very important service to provide to our families for that before and after-school care and accommodating needs of families. So Brian's doing a nice job with that. The other thing, speaking of Brian, this is a little bit off-topic, but I wanted to share, I was walking through Powers and Brian's done such a great job of working with the staff. And as we've shared in our restart plans, the distancing piece is different in every classroom because obviously you have different square footages, different sized classrooms, building to building, and then you, of course, you have different class sizes. But it was so interesting because the design of the new Powers building and the flexibility that we have with the garage doors has really helped in this situation because what we've already seen is teachers now getting creative and opening those garage doors, moving their desk into that space actually outside of the classroom, if you will, so that there's more room in the classroom for spacing and that type of thing. So I thought it was interesting that, you know, we talked about this open design and flexible spaces and those types of things. It's already neat to see the way teachers have made adjustments compared to what they were doing in February and March, adjusting their classroom layouts with the space that's available to make sure we have the spacing. So I just wanted to, yeah, that Brian's just working with the staff and moving people around at the largest classrooms and that kind of thing. So again, a little bit off-topic, but I did want to share that. At this point, we'd like to recommend items 11A through 11J.
So move.
Did you get that in?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? We're in line, will call please. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozzi?
Aye.
Mrs. Nyer?
Aye.
Educational recommendations, Mr. Sayers?
Yes, thank you. We have four items here, and as I mentioned previously, the first item is our restart plan. Again, all that information is available not only in the exhibit, but on our website as well. I want to say it's, I don't know how many documents are there, but rather extensive. So that information is available on the website. Revised school calendar, which is actually very similar to what we approved previously. The only difference is we backed up the student start date by exactly one week. Actually, very similar. I think A-Mon was scheduled to start on the 20th and they're starting on the 27th and we're in a very, very similar situation. Again, other school districts that were scheduled to start after the fair and they're kind of bumping back until I think maybe the day after Labor Day. So again, each district very unique in their start dates. I did want to also mention, and actually as a point of clarification, item C, the online memorandum, this is separate from our E-Campus program. Our E-Campus program that we're developing as part of the restart program is going to be, those courses are going to be taught by our staff, our teachers. This is what we utilize sometimes for those students that maybe need a course for credit recovery, or maybe they're not able to attend school for medical reasons, maybe a student here, a student there, that this really gives us a lot of flexibility to meet those individual student needs. So I did want to clarify that this is not a part of the campus program, but something separate. And then last item is our nursing services. One of the things we've done is actually worked with Lorain County Health Department to increase our nursing services. Actually, what we've done is we've reduced our RN supervisory time and increased our LPM time, which actually gives us more time and more coverage with our students. So Sarah did a great job of working with Joanne Frito at the Health Department, and I think we've got a good plan in place to start as far as nursing coverage, expanded nursing coverage in our buildings. And again, this is one of those things that, you know, I said to someone the other day, I said, you know, as we get into it, you know, we may have to adjust and adapt and make changes based on what's happening. Again, this is something that we may have to, you know, maybe move two hours from this building and move the person over to this building, or add an hour or two, whatever it may be. But I think we've got, based on what we know right now, going into the year, a good, good plan. So Sarah, thank you for that. Would like to recommend items 12A through 12D.
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
I have a couple of things. On the conference schedules that are on the calendar, I'm assuming that those are going to be virtual and not in-person, or that has not yet been determined?
Yeah, they, actually, we did, I'm glad you brought this up because we actually changed and adjusted the AGH parent conference times and STE conference times. So the times are a little bit different as well, but it's my understanding from the principals is that the parent conferences will be done virtually.
And I think we should note that on the calendar.
Yeah, and, you know, we could do that. And the other thing that we could do too is our open houses are going to be done virtually as well. So we can, is before we publish the final calendar, we can indicate that. As Mike mentioned, those are going out, I think, by the 21st, if I remember. So again, obviously, this is a year where you don't want to, you know how our open houses are. Where we have tons and tons.
It's just a bullet at the top. The conferences will be virtual. There's no discussion because I think some will think that they're going to be in-person. So I think the more notice we give them about.
Yeah, that's a great point of clarification.
Because especially if they're in school, they may think they're going to get to come to school and talk to that teacher in person. So that's the reason I think that it would be a better.
We could just make a nice little bullet point, Janet, and just, you know, highlight the open houses and parent-teacher conferences will be done virtually.
And then the other question that I had in regards to the public health nurses, when we at first started using public health nurses to the Health Department, there was some money available from the SEC. Do we still get any money from the SEC to provide those services?
From the ESC?
ESC.
For the, I don't, I don't, not that I'm.
We never, I mean, I thought initially we did because it was, it was a kind of innovative deal and there was some money available. And I don't remember how much or whatever. I don't think it was a lot of money, but I thought we did get some dollars from them.
Yeah, what we are using is some wellness dollars. You may remember with the last state budget, you know, there was an allocation for districts for this biennium, and those dollars have not been cut, at least as of yet. We're hoping they don't get cut. Obviously, the states made other cuts, but those wellness dollars have remained intact. And we actually carried over some from last year. So we plan on using some of our wellness dollars to help pay for these additional nursing services.
Thank you.
I do have other items that could fall on this agenda.
Not that one yet?
Well, it is, it's just strictly, I have some questions brought to my attention about parent volunteers. Have we addressed parent volunteers, especially in elementary schools, because they go in, they need, they do this, they do that? And I've made the assumption, just from what I've read, that there will be no one permitted to go and do that. So parent volunteers are going to be minimal to none this year. And I think somewhere we need to make that statement in something that we pose or put out or whatever because I think that they're thinking that that's going to be a way that they can get into the building. So that's, I had three discussions about that.
And we also use parent volunteers, obviously, for some of those outside of school trips and overnight stays and educational experiences and saying maybe those will not be happening maybe, well, most likely so, maybe the same communication. We can combine it all in and let everyone know, parent volunteers and those kind of experiences are probably not going to happen this year. I have no other items.
Does anyone else want to talk?
Clarifying, we're a bit of a, we're going with fall sports. Good question. We, the fall sports has really been quite the roller coaster ride. We've received communication from OHSA one day last week, I can't remember what that was, well, actually, I think it was maybe two weeks ago, it was right because practices started on the first, so it must have been right before that, that to go ahead and plan and proceed with fall sports. Well, then there was a recommendation that came out, I want to say late last week, that the football season would be modified to six games, I believe it would be, and everybody would qualify for the playoffs. And then if you wanted to play more games, you could. Of course, this is all subject to the governor's approval and ultimately up to the governor. So that is, districts have kind of been moving forward and the workouts and the practices have been continuing with fall sports. But just recently, the Mid-American Conference, you know, the Kent States, the Bowling Greens, the Akron's, Miami, Ohio, OU, that conference has canceled all fall sports.
Big Ten canceled.
And the Big Ten, we just heard today that the Big Ten has, will be canceling fall sports as well. So what that impact may or may not have on what happens at the high school level, you know, we just had.
We'll see.
So, but yeah, it's, again, we just take it a day at a time, but it could, that could have an impact, obviously, on what happens at the high school level.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? No? Okay. Um, we go? Yeah, no. Okay. Okay, take the roll, please. Mr. Yakubozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Nyer?
Aye.
Business recommendations?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Nyer. Just two items. First one is an item that the board, again, is used to seeing. As you're aware, we have a great, great partnership with the City of Amherst and the Amherst Police Department. And Brad. Just two items. First one is an item that the board, again, is used the same. As you're aware, we have a great, great partnership with the city of Amherst and the Amherst Police Department. And Brian, Brian's over here, hiding out in the corner. But we very much appreciate his work and Officer Layfield and what they do for our students and our staff and our community. So again, happy to make this recommendation for this partnership for another year. And then the second item there is giving TIA the authorization to develop routes and adjust those routes and stops as needed for the upcoming year. As Mike mentioned previously, we will be doing a survey this week. It won't be 100% accurate, but at least it'll give us an idea to help us plan in terms of how many students we're potentially looking at on each route so that if we need to make some adjustments, we can. And then, of course, obviously, for arrival and dismissal, traffic patterns and that type of thing as far as car riders. So those are the two items there. Would like to recommend items 13A and 13B.
Second.
Any discussion on this? You're in the role call, please.
Mr. Zappa? Mr. Yakubozzi? Mr. Engel? Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Yes? Any other question?
Sure. With the schools, as far as the people entering the schools and not being allowed to, how are we going to control that? Are they going to be, the doors going to be locked and buzzed in? Or they just, like, before it can walk, where are they going to be stopped to say, hey, you know, this is as far as you go?
Actually, I know that's a building. Have you heard the, from the building?
Yeah, I heard it. We also discussed a little bit today too. I believe that most are, you know, stopping in the vest field and/or like Powers possibly through, you know, office window. And they're working on things like electronic signatures for sign-ins and so forth. So there's no possible interaction, correct?
Correct.
Are they going to be allowed to get into the building? Or how far, the doors going to be open initially or are they going to be buzzed in from the outside?
Like here at Steel, it'll probably be buzzed in from the outside. They might, the vest field, but not.
That's as far as they go.
Yes.
I believe vest fields like this have some protective shield put up.
Yeah, they actually have, in fact, I think the high school one, maybe, at least they start with shields in front of the wreaths. We're in the process of having those installed.
What do you do in the case where parents, this goes to Mark's question. Parents typically, when they pick their kids up, sometimes they want to come into school together.
Yeah. You guys have already published that they have to stay in the car and call in.
Stay in the car and call in. I saw that, I saw that all the, the door.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Ashley, do you want to share something about that?
Yeah, so it's all the electronic, through the electronic sign-in and sign-out. So we'll have a QR code, a plan is, they'll have a QR code so anybody with their smartphone can, you know, just scan it and then it'll take you right to a Google form where you enter in your information. And that was something we had started actually back in June, district-wide, going to a uniform sign-in, sign-out procedure. And so now we're just modifying that and making it available electronically. And then so if, like at Steel, we have a lot of students who can sign themselves out because, you know, a parent sends them a note and all that, so that's already in the process. And that will all be done in the vest field area.
And if I could add, I think, like, for example, Powers, expectation, we have a parent who can make a phone call. I can arrive and pick up my child who's been in the office for your own appointment. And then a stacker will walk the child out to the car, possibly do an electronic signature either out there or the stacker doing it themselves for checkout. So they're, but they're still working on those specific details.
I have a question. So what are you, what are you guys going to do if a grandparent comes and they don't have a smartphone?
Yeah, so that's what we are saying. We won't have exceptions, you know, for that. This is, there could, we will still have the physical sign-out sheet that we would normally have if that needed to be the case. Yeah, so definitely.
Does that sign-out signature have to match something? I mean, you know, who, just so I sign a form, I'm taking this kid, does that form or that signature have to match something?
Yeah, we can match up with the emergency.
You show your ID.
Always going to look at them, right?
You show your ID.
Medical information.
Yes. So just like before where you had to show your ID, they'll still be showing their ID. And like for us here at Steel, Mrs. Stack would verify that the person picking up is on, the emergency contact is able to.
I mean, theoretically, if I sent one of my kids to pick up my younger child and they're not on that form, would they be allowed to go?
Not unless they were on, unless you had designated them ahead of time to say, of these folks, it's okay for them to pick up my child at school. Yeah, which goes back to what Mike was saying earlier about why this emergency contact information is so important. It's important, obviously, every year, but especially this year, with the, obviously, the situation we're in, it's even more critical that we have that.
Can parents on the form that with seven contacts, it's a very easy check mark of, first, do you live with them? Do you pick up mail from them? Can you pick up emergency phone calls? So they can check off every one of those possible scenarios that they want every single contact to be just to know.
I have a question.
That's a surprise.
With arrival. Typically, we don't, they just come early, like in high school, especially with multiple doors. Are we designating doors for arrival so that when three or four buses pull up, that they're not all mass hurrying in? How do we do that?
Ashley, you want to speak to that?
Yes, we are staggering in arrival. We are. So, and our buses, depending, you know, how they come in. Another thing was sometimes some buses get here before others and some of the kids wait on the buses. So we, we'll have the north gym where we can stagger them in and wait before, you know, we go in. But yeah, here at Steel, we have, we're staggering them in through the south lobby. Typically, in years past, they could come inside and just wait in the south lobby. We're not going to have them just waiting in the south lobby. We're going to ask that you wait in your car if you're a student driver and if your parent dropping off, that you don't come before. We open the doors at 7:35 so that we don't have those areas congregating.
The south lobby was what I was wondering about because it used to be just a.
Absolutely, yeah.
Go in there and.
And hang out for, I mean.
The hangout place until they're ready.
Yeah, so, and then same thing for up here at the front lot because we get some parents that drop off in the front, like in our senior, what I call our senior parking lot. And then we'll have the bus riders. Also, another area that a lot of people come in is like by our cafeteria. So we're going to designate that only for our breakfast, our kids that are getting breakfast. And then that way it kind of clears out an area of gathering where they typically would gather before. Those would just be for our breakfast kiddos and then our bus riders coming in through the north gym.
Anybody else?
Just a comment. Keep it here, sir. This whole crazy world we live in is caused many people to be, I was on the same end of the state. There's a lot of pressure on people to react differently. And I think it would be in our best interest to be, because every, when school begins, everybody's excited. Kids are coming, they don't, they sometimes forget about their surroundings. I think it'd be, we ought to tell our staff and our great police force to have a heightened sense of awareness of what's going on around us. Because there are just some people out there who think, you know, starting schools is a bad thing, they shouldn't be doing it. They have differences of opinion, whatever that may be. But I think it's just in our best interest to make sure everybody has a heightened sense of awareness of their surroundings. And what's, who's out there, what are they doing with someone standing around? Try to pick them off as quick as we can. If we spot something that's unusual. And even if it's nothing, it's worth it. Still, approach them and checking.
Absolutely.
That's where the guys at Pride come in, right?
That's a great point.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Okay. Provided we do have sports, provided that we do play football. What are we doing with the concessions?
With what?
With concessions. Are we bidding them? Are we just going to have vending machines out there?
We haven't figured that out yet. To be perfectly honest, we, we've just been kind of waiting to see. The same thing with transportation, you know, for like football and that kind of thing. We've been waiting to see and we're, I think we will have an idea by the end of this week whether football is a go or not a go, or fall sports in general. And then, I mean, because at some point, I mean, two weeks from Friday is the first game. I mean, at some point, there has to be a decision by the folks in Columbus. And then if it is a go, then we're going to have to get together with our booster folks and figure out, you know, is this, is this possible? Is it not possible? You know, obviously, Casey, Joe, everybody involved in that and to figure out what that would look like. But to be perfectly honest, we haven't, we haven't looked at that yet.
I don't know if you know, with the, with the football schedule, six games?
Yes.
Who's deciding who's going to play who? You know, I mean, that table could be run pretty good. And then I heard some, some schools in our district aren't playing.
Well, and again, this is what complicates everything so much because a week ago, I don't know the days, I'm trying to remember the days, but about a week ago, the Health Commissioner in Cuyahoga County recommended that schools go all remote and suspend extracurricular activities. And so obviously, we have some schools in our league, you know, Homestead Falls, Norwood, Homestead, Maria, Lightwood. Yeah, Westlake, they were in a position where, so initially, they followed that recommendation and said, you know, no sports practices. Well, some, some of those schools have now turned around and they have allowed their athletic teams to, to practice. So with our league and half the schools being in Marin County and half the schools being in Cuyahoga County, you can see that we've actually been having that conversation for a week. I mean, are we even going to have a Southwest Conference as we know it? And then that was even before the sixth game, it was, recommendation came out from OHSAA. So again, I don't have good answers to those questions yet either.
Well, then I heard today that if you play one game, you still qualify.
Yeah, everybody, my understanding is everybody would qualify for the state playoff.
Because you wouldn't have to play all six. You could play one.
Oh, is that right?
That's what I heard.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's, if there's no question, it's a problem. It's a problem. And of course, schools have, you know, independent games that have been scheduled. For example, we play fire ones, you know, outside of the league's schedule. You know, fortunately, we're in the same county, but sometimes, you know, that doesn't always happen. We also have independent games with people that are in Cuyahoga County. So it, it, there's just a lot to be determined. And I wish I had, I wish I had better answers to all the questions that come up. But it's just, as fast as we find things out, it seems like something else comes up. So I will obviously keep you posted. But I would think the Health Commissioner predicted at his meeting with us on Friday that we would know a lot more about high school athletics from the governor by the end of this week. So, which is two weeks before the football season. So hopefully that will, that will happen.
Anybody else? So we're going to need to adjourn to executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees and to prepare for collective bargaining with public employees with no action to be taken.
So move.
Any discussion? All right, role call, please.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.